Back everyone, we are, we are back from the executive session. Back with our regular public portion of our voting meeting. Our agenda is a bit different tonight because we have a special, special presentation by fourth graders from Beverly J. Martin and Northeast. But just first of all, as far as I know, folks, we have no modification to the agenda as it currently is in front of us this evening, correct? No modifications? If not, speak now, but I think we're good for the rest of the meeting. So we will, according to agenda, go directly to a presentation from Beverly J. Martin and Northeast fourth graders. And very much looking forward to hearing what they have to say tonight.
Hi, Rob. I don't see Stephen Anderson on the, on the chat or on the meeting.
Nicole, any insights that you may have?
I don't have any personal insights, but I do see that Dr. Ash, the principal of BJM, is on the call, so she might have some insight.
Thank you, Nicole. And thank you, Dr. Ash, please.
Here's what I know. I texted Stephen a moment ago to say, hey, are you on Zoom yet? And he said, no, but you know, we're all waiting. The four, fourth graders are probably pretty nervous. So I know they're trying. I don't know if there's an issue for getting on, but they're, they're hoping to be on.
We will gladly give them a few minutes. And they shouldn't be nervous. And I shouldn't tell anyone not to be nervous. So, but we look forward to it.
Right, because they're nine, because they're nine.
Dr. Ash, do you want to give any background information? Or maybe even have some young people start without the leader of the classroom?
And or Ms. Talkin, I know you've been talking with Ms. Anderson as well.
Here's what Mr. Anderson just texted me. My screen says we're waiting for the host to start the meeting. So somehow he hasn't been let in yet.
Yeah, he must have the wrong link. We, oh.
You know what? He gave me the link for the wrong thing. I'll tell him.
Yeah.
Let me tell him and then I can, I'm happy to set a little bit of stage for you guys. Okay? Um, go to the. Wait a minute. We're, we're going to get somewhere I can feel it.
I just emailed Mr. Anderson the direct link.
Yeah, I am also calling him. Hey, Stephen. Okay, I just spoke with him and he's going to look for the, the changed link. I'm sorry. So a little bit of context. The fourth grade curriculum out of Engage New York is a look at early American history and includes both study of the Haudenosaunee and then also a study of the early colonies and the, what would be known as the colonial period. Now, over the years, they've continued to use this book that's called If You Lived in Colonial America. And I, you hear the tone of my voice when I say that title. It's a, it's a pretty whitewashed look at colonial America. Um, it even says that it's updated, but when you look at it, you find no people of color, no indigenous people. Um, no one except really white little boys and girls in drawings, doing little colonial American jobs. And so while they try to examine what life might have been back in those days, um, over the years, our students with very good support and direction from their teachers have learned to ask questions, to unpack what is going on in this text. And I know Mr. Anderson and I have had the conversation that said, should we just get rid of the text altogether? Or should we continue to use it as something that is such an obvious opportunity to critique it? Um, and without such an obvious opportunity to critique it in a far, far better text, might they actually lose that opportunity for criticality versus just gaining the content that they might gain that they'll learn again later in seventh grade? So it's an interesting debate and his students, um, our fourth and fifth grade students loop, but our fourth graders unpack this kind of thinking regularly. And these guys decided to take action. And I think what he wants to present is some of the action that his students took. So let's hope that he's about to be on and that some of his students, they wrote letters to UN to Scholastic, who publishes the book. I'll also say that those of you who are aware that we're, the district is using Goldie Muhammad's historical literacy as a framework for looking at our literacy. This process that they went through is a great example of it. Looking at their own personal identities, figuring out what knowledge they needed, using the skills to read, write, unpack, speak and think, and then using a critical lens in order to make sense of what it is that they're learning. So it looks like Stephen's here, so go for it, Stephen, or whoever.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being patient and staying with me. I had the wrong link and sent the wrong link to my family. So I just sent them the correct link and hoping that they are close by to a computer. We, I think Susan set the, set the stage for us. And I wanted to welcome in some of my fourth grade students because tonight we're here to honor the words and the actions of our young people and fourth graders from Beverly J. Martin in Northeast. They're presenting letters that they wrote to the Board of Education and to Scholastics in response to a book we've been reading in our class called If You Lived in Colonial Times. And this, this project was important because the text is recommended by New York State. It's recommended as an anchor text to the Social Studies and English Language Arts curriculum. And when teachers all across New York State teach their students about colonial America, they use this text. And this project is, it's important to me personally because I'm aligned with the district mission to, to raise young people that are anti-racist and to, and to question and to think critically of the information that they consume, even if that information or even if those opinions are from, are from their teachers. And I imagine that someday these young people will walk into a classroom and they'll be handed a text like this and they won't be given the space or the opportunity to, to question it and to think critically. So I think, I think we have to give them those tools now. And then lastly, I just want young people to know that they have a voice and to feel empowered to use it and to know that their voice is strong enough to, to affect change. So these, these brave fourth graders that are here tonight, they're going to take a risk. They're going to share with you their work of their critical reading of this text. And, and at the end, we welcome your questions and your feedback. So I have, let me see who I have with me. We have an order and I hope that all of those students are here. Ruthie, Ruth Niederteppe, if you're here, you're up first. All right, let's try a different order. Emma, are you here?
Yeah.
Why don't you kick us off?
Dear Board of Education, If You Lived in Colonial Times is not honest. It's a book that whitewashes colonial history because the only people mentioned in this book are white. Anna McGovern only includes a few sentences about Native Americans and they're all negative. This is what kids are learning. They are learning nasty and brutal things. For example, the book says, "It was easy for an Indian to walk across a bridge. An Indian was used to it." Why is this what Anna McGovern is sharing with us about Native Americans? I think that she should have included that Native Americans built cool longhouses and had many important contributions. I think this is important for all young people because they should be aware of the issues around them. If you were Anna McGovern, what would you say about the, about colonial times? If I was going to say something, I would say something that was true and positive about Native people. Sincerely, Anna.
Thanks, Emma. Looks like Ruthie's here, but has not been made a co-host. So if Ruth can, can get the right to unmute herself, I think she would love to share her letter as well.
Is Ruthie logged in under a name other than Ruthie?
It's Lee Humphries, I'm sorry.
You ready? There you go, there you go.
Okay. There you go.
Dear Board of Education, I believe that the book If You Lived in Colonial Times is, is a dishonest book. It lacks mirrors for my black classmates and it whitewashes American history. I don't agree that the, that this book should be in the hands of fourth graders who may not know American or colonial history. I think that if you want us fourth graders to read a book about colonial history, it should be an honest book about our past, not one that shows only eight mentions of Native Americans, which they call Indians, and one three-sentence paragraph and one three-sent, and one three-sentence paragraph about black slaves in an 80-page book. The author quotes, "Some people did not want to come. They were black slaves from Africa to be bought or sold." This is the only mention of African Americans in the entire book. The book also says that mail carriers must carry a gun in case of an unfriendly Indian bear or wolf, comparing them with animals and implying that they would need to hurt Native Americans or worse. This is a stereotype of Native Americans. I strongly believe that you should change the book into an honest book about colonial times that is safe to put in the hands of kids like me. Thank you for listening to this letter and I hope you change the book that is mandatory to study in fourth grade.
Thank you, Ruth. All right, we're entirely out of order now, so I'm just going to take a chance and hope that the next name I call is a student who's with us now. Daniel Yazdani, Daniel, are you with us? Maybe, maybe it's under Miriam, but Daniel's a co-host, perfect.
Okay. Dear Scholastics, hi, my name is Daniel and I am writing to you because there's a book called If You Lived in Colonial Times. This book is dishonest and racist and tells nothing about black and brown people. I would like you to remove this book from schools. I don't recommend this book because this book is dangerous because it whitewashes American history. It doesn't even call Native Americans, Native Americans. It calls them Indians. This book got updated once since 1964 and only changed the pictures, not any of the offensive writing. Also on the timeline, it says that in, in 1492, Christopher Columbus discovered America. Instead, it should say he found America because Native Americans were already on the land. Furthermore, this book only tells three sentences about African slaves. It says, "Some people were not glad to come. These people came from Africa. They were sold as slaves. They'll never see their homes again." Come on, just that? Another reason this book is dishonest is because it says on page 65, "Sometimes the mail was never delivered. The person you hired might, might be killed by some Indians." Come on, the Europeans were the one that stole their land and attacked them. You know, some people who are learning about colonialism might believe the lies in this book. This book does not give mirrors to our black classmates. So either remove it or at least give more voices to the blacks, to the stories of black people. Please take some of my suggestions. Sincerely, Daniel Yazdani.
Thank you, Daniel. Sophia Eckinroad, if you're here.
Okay. Hello, my name is.
I don't think you're on yet.
There you go.
All right, okay. Hello, my name is Sophia. I'm in fourth grade. I go to BJM and I'm not. I'm going to talk about, today I'm going to talking about replacing a book or changing it so it doesn't, so it doesn't tell so many lies. The book is called If You Lived in Colonial Times by Anna McGovern, illustrated by June Etna. I have three complaints about this book. My first complaint is that I am looking and reading this book and I see no images or mentions of dark-skinned people. My second complaint is on the cover of this book, it says new and updated. But in 60 years, all they do is change illustrations. My third complaint is that they mention people from Africa only three times in an 80-page book. They need to mention them more. Those are my three complaints, but I still have one more thing. It is not a complaint. It is a site called Colonial Williams Book. It talks about colonial people of all colors. That is why you should, you should add this to the list of things they should show to teachers. That is also why I should stop showing this book to people or change it or show the website Colonial Williams Book and maybe get a good idea from it and put it into the book. Thank you for listening. Sincerely, Sophia Eckinroad. Dad, you're muted.
Thanks, Emma. What would I do without you? You've been keeping me accountable this whole year. Clara Monroe, are you here? So she's assigned to a breakout room. She can hear and see the meeting now. So she's been assigned to a breakout room. What we can do is, is throw it to Lily and come back to Clara. Lily Fortenberry, are you here?
Dear Scholastics News, hi, I'm writing to you because of the book If You Lived in Colonial Times. It is dishonest, rude and bad. You do not mention Native Americans or black people very much. I'm very disappointed that you think we can learn from this book. We are supposed to learn about all history, not just white people. I want you to rewrite the book and this is what I want to see. Do not call Native Americans Indian and mention them more. There are many examples in the book of dishonest treatment of black and brown people. For instance, on page 66, the author writes, "The mailman kept his gun loaded. There might be a hungry bear or a wolf nearby, or an unfriendly Indian. That is just cruel rudimentary. It is cruel rudimentary because you are teaching children to compare Native Americans to animals and they are wild and that white Europeans are better than Native Americans. But that is not true. It doesn't matter what you look like, whether you have white skin, brown skin, or even black skin. We are all the same, thinking of killing an innocent person? So what if they tried to scare you? What did they ever do to you?"
Thank you, Lily. You guys are really brave and I'm proud of you. We have two more readers. Clara is telling me that Clara is telling me she is not at call, so she can't unmute or turn her camera on. So if we could make Clara Monroe, there she is. Hi Clara.
Hi. Okay. Dear Scholastic, I think the book If You Lived in Colonial Times is dishonest and inaccurate. My friends and I are disappointed because this is not really what happened in American history, to African Americans. Even though your claim is new and updated, you did not change the words at all from the last edition of the book. Do you actually know what happened? This book whitewashes American history. I don't think it's fair that you're giving people this book when it's not entirely true. It is unfair to the reader, unfair to the people from colonial times, especially non-white people. In the book, there are a total of 80 pages and only three sentences about people of color. I think that you should take this book back from all schools and to change it to make it more accurate and more appropriate. For example, on page 57, it says, "It was easy for an Indian to walk across a long bridge. An Indian was used to it." It's wrong to call Native Americans Indians. This is offensive to their culture. Also on page 66, it says from the text, "The mail carrier kept a gun loaded in case there was an unfriendly Indian bear or wolf." And why did he say that? In my opinion, I think this is very important that you add more accurate information about people of color. Please make these changes in your next edition. Thank you. Yours truly, Clara.
Clara, amazing, thank you. Last reader, Maya Mack. You're waiting to be made a co-host as well.
Um, yeah, I'm muted, okay. Um, dear Board of Education, my name is Maya Mack and I'm a fourth grader at Northeast. And I would like to have a discussion about the book If You Lived in Colonial Times. The book says new and updated. It hasn't truly been updated throughout 57 years of being published. All the publisher did was change the illustrations and leave the words alone. No one really needs good pictures. What they need is the truth. On the back of the book, it says, "This book tells you what it was like to live in New England colonies. However, the only thing the book tells you is what it might, is what it might have been like for white people. And what it does tell you about how the Native, how the Native Americans lived is dishonest. In addition, the treatment of slavery is also dishonest. Out of 80 pages, Anna McGovern writes only three sentences about African slavery, nothing more. The book treats Native Americans like they were cruel and should be feared and avoided at all costs. For example, on page 66, it says, 'He kept his gun loaded, for there might be a hungry wolf or a bear, or possibly an unfriendly Indian.' Calling an Indian unfriendly just because he slash she is trying to protect his slash our homeland is a really negative stereotype that's extremely one-sided. In summary, I would like, I would like you to stop handing this book out to schools. It whitewashes history and is an embarrassment to the world. Sincerely, Maya Mack."
Yes. That's the kind of flair we needed to end on, Maya. And then that's, that's the work from our young people. That's the work the young people around the district are engaged in. And we're sending our letters to Scholastics, the publisher as well. The students mentioned that this book was, was published about 60 years ago. Advertises as being new and updated, but only the illustrations have been changed.
Thank you, Stephen. Great job, fourth graders. Emma, thanks for giving, giving Stephen all the help he needs. We all need help and Stephen does, but Maya, Sophia, Clara, Lillian, Danielle, thank you very much and others that I can't see right now. But we also, any, any questions from the board? Any comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Let me turn my camera on. So I, I'm very appreciative. I feel like I've really been educated this, this evening. So by sharing this with us, it's made me feel like I want to take some action too. You know, I would like to write to Scholastic. I would like to, you know, they, they sell these books. I think anybody who's bought this book should get a refund. And I think they should stop selling these books. And in addition, I think that this book should be taken off the recommended list from the New York State Education Department. And that's something that I would like to write to them about. And I think it would be really great if you sent all your letters to them so that they can know exactly what is so terribly wrong with this book and putting it and recommending that it be put into the hands of fourth graders. Your writing is powerful and convincing and I really appreciate you sharing it with us.
This is, and I think, I'd just like to echo what Marissa does. I agree completely. I really enjoyed hearing your takes on these books, which really truly do sound terrible. And I think it's important to bring these issues up. I think it's, I'm surprised that New York State is just, I guess what? Bringing the books into the classroom and not analyzing them in a current viewpoint. I'd be happy to put this on our legislative advocacy agenda because we meet once a month if we can help take it another step. Because we sometimes have opportunities within that committee to bring these issues forward to other, other folks in the state.
I'll echo my colleagues. Mr. Anderson, powerful example of teaching to Emma, Ruth, Daniel, Sophia, Clara, Lily, Clara and Maya. Your courage is amazing. That sort of insight and reading a book and then talking about what you find to be wrong with it is extremely, extremely powerful. Yeah, you've all given me inspiration for the day. So thank you tremendously for talking to us. And as long as Ms. Anne Reichlin said, please send your letters to the board as well. I would love to read a copy of all the letters that were sent. So thank you again. Thank you, thank you.
I just want to, of course, echo what everyone else has said and add my own special thanks to our amazing fourth graders for keeping it real. We call this as old people speaking truth to power. This is what you're doing. It's really good to see you starting out at such a young age. And to all the adults on the call, listening, this is what we mean by giving our young people voice and joyce. This is what project-based learning is like. This is what an anti-marginalization piece of curriculum like. This is what culturally responsive teaching looks like. I just heard a pretty infuriating, well, I read a pretty infuriating message from a dear friend of mine who's younger and indigenous. And she just graduated from the high school, or actually she graduated from LACS. She was asking the community if they knew of any alternative educational mechanisms because it is like a city school district failed her so often. They're her education. And again, she is an indigenous person. And I've been trying to tell her that, you know, the young people coming out, that even in first grade, are trying to correct all of the mistakes that she encountered. But, you know, we thank you for your work. It's also important to realize that, you know, this is years too late. But with your work, hopefully we can accelerate these transitions so we can truly have a multicultural, pluralistic education that treats everybody's histories fairly. Thank you.
Hi, Clara, Emma, Lillian, Maya, Ruthie, Sophia. Thank you for your courage and bravery. There are about 200 people on this call and it's amazing to hear your voices. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for encouraging our students to, to read and to ask critical questions. When we're in elementary school, we tend to read things. We remember dates and timelines, but to actually think about historians and asking, pushing them to think about the history that they're teaching all of you is something that I was not doing in fourth grade. So the level of self-advocacy and agency that you all have shown tonight has definitely moved me and I was fighting back tears because all of your words were so powerful. So thank you so much. So thank you so much.
I, I want to also thank you. I can't take credit for this. One of my colleagues recently said to a group of youth leaders, you know, we so often say, "Youth leadership, youth leadership." But you're leaders now. Youth has nothing to do with it. You speaking up today is one of the first steps you take in leadership. And it's so amazing to hear everything you had to say today. And I feel like this is one of many steps you're going to take, being leaders in your communities and here in ICSD. So thank you so much for speaking tonight.
Hello, folks. I'm so impressed with everything you've delivered. And it's often said, people don't remember what you say, but they remember how you make them feel. And everything you shared this evening made me feel, one, empowered and also very proud of the message you delivered. Your ability to share critical thinking and challenge, you know, the way things were and the way things have been shared. And as Eldridge said, speak truth to power is impressive and it's going to resonate with everyone who's actually on this call. And I want to truly thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Everyone, any, any other comments right now for Mr. Anderson and his great students? If not, Mr. Anderson, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for volunteering to step up and share what your students are experiencing in the classroom. Our best, our best meetings are always when we hear from other students and what is happening in the classroom. I've said that many times and I'll say it again tonight. So, Mr. Anderson, I really appreciate your work. And, and we're going to let the kids go. Mr. Anderson, you can stay on if you want, but I, you know, you don't have to sit in front of a computer anymore today if you don't have to. So, but, but thank you. Anything else, Mr. Anderson, before you go?
I just wanted to thank you all for, for giving the space to these young people to, to share their voice. Thank you to Lilly. Thank you to Dr. Brown. Thank you to the Board of Education.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll let, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. And next is public comment period. And, and Sean, if you want to just walk us through that.
Bear with me, folks. I apologize. I'm trying to locate the list of names. I believe up first on our list is Patula McBean.
Just go back to the meeting.
All right, we can always come back. And again, I offer my apologies for any mispronunciations. Please do correct us so we can make sure we have it correct in the record. Up next is.
Wait, we're here. Sorry for that. My name is Michael Thomas and I'm here speaking for my mom. That's, that's not in the best health condition tonight. And she wanted to say, some of you may know me from the IHS basketball program, youth sports or youth advocate program. I come before you today as a district employee, a mother and as longstanding member of the Ithaca community to speak to the leadership in ICSD. I would like to commend the board for their commitment to project-based learning and anti-racist work in for constantly putting the well-being of our young people before all. Over the past decade, we have seen unceivable progress, not only in our graduation rate, but in the overall quality of education, which reaches beyond the walls of our classrooms. ICSD embodies exactly what our children need to succeed in life. A strong foundation in social, emotional learning, dedication to new technologies and unbelievable support system for students and staff and teaching our children to understand one another's culture and love and respect for each other. This, the global pandemic has taken a toll on us all. And in many ways, our young people have been hit the hardest as their lives were, were uprooted. They look to us for guidance and answers. Although controversial, our current leadership made the bold and wise decision for families to have the option to keep their children in school five days a week. Filters were replaced. PPE was purchased and much time was spent mapping out classrooms so that our students could safely return. The reopening of schools was a success under the current ICSD leadership. And for that, I am so grateful. Last year, in the beginning month of the pandemic, it seemed like things could not get any worse. And then the murder of George Floyd was televised for all to see. His ultimate death unfortunately was the only beginning of the unmasking of countless other murders and unfair treatment of unarmed black people in our country. Although events like these have always existed in the dark corners of society, hidden and tucked away. This time was different. This time witnessed everyone, including our children and young people. We must not ignore the disease of racism. Our children deserve better than that. As a mother, a caregiver, a caregiver and a member of the community, I speak for the vast majority when I say, anti-racist work is not just a nicety. It is a necessity. Let's keep up the momentum going. I know our current leader will lead us in the right direction. I would like to end by saying, there has been so much unnecessary, unnecessary. Unnecessity all over this past year. Children and young people need consistency and security now more than ever before. Our current ICSD leadership has taken on the right path over the past ten years. And I look forward to the future as we come out of the worst of times and enter into a new age of innovation, culturiness, cultural awareness, acceptance and limitness possibilities. Thank you for your time. Sincerely.
MJ, let me thank you for also the courage to read that. Thank you for sharing as well. Greatly appreciate it. And when we're that close, we'll try to make sure that we give people a little bit extra time to finish, even though our policy says three minutes. So thank you, Patula McBean, and thank you, MJ Thomas. I was beginning by trying to say if I mispronounce a name, please correct me. Up next is Karina Lockenhoff.
Yes, that's correct. And I hope you can hear me now. I am here today to amplify the voices of two stakeholders in the district who do not feel comfortable speaking out in person. I'm honored to share these statements on their behalf. The first statement is from a teacher. Quote, "Teachers were asked to form a reopening committee over the summer. They worked many hours and came up with a plan that would cohort students, minimizing the need to quarantine due to exposure. Twenty-four hours before it was due, Dr. Brown said he did not like their plan and told them what he wanted them to say. Why even have these committees if you don't want to use the feedback other than to put the blame on them?" End quote. The second statement I was asked to read is from a fellow parent. Quote, "I am a parent of two children at Ithaca High School. I'm also a parent of color. It is very important that the legitimate concerns about the transparency of the process that took place after Mr. Ainsley received the two-hundred-page document not be derailed by allegations of discrimination and racism. I believe that much good has been done in the district, but we must have accountability and must make sure that our district leaders and the board adhere to the highest standards of ethical conduct. It is not enough and it is condescending to describe the very serious allegations of workplace misconduct and abuse of public resources as simply a personal matter. To restore the confidence of the parents and other stakeholders, there must be a comprehensive investigation by an independent third party and a commitment to release a very thorough and detailed report of the investigation." End quote. After sharing these voices, I would like to add a statement of my own in the remaining time, speaking as the parent of two children in the district. I am concerned about the new language on the Board of Education website indicating that, quote, "The board cannot permit public discussions involving individual district personnel or students." End quote. This may be appropriate with respect to individual teachers and lower-level administrators. However, I hope that this argument will not be used to stifle discussions about the recent allegations of professional misconduct against the superintendent. The board hires and evaluates the superintendent, so board meetings should be the place to raise questions about his or her leadership. In a pandemic, the decisions of the superintendent not only affect the future of our children's education, but impact the physical health and safety of teachers, students and the community at large. The stakes are high and Dr. Brown will not be able to serve as an effective leader until confidence is restored through transparency, a willingness to answer hard questions and an independent third-party investigation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Up next is Liz Quadrozzi.
I'm going to tell you every time, Sean, Quadrozzi, good Italian name.
Liz, my sincere apologies. I keep making the mistake. I apologize.
Someday you're going to get it and I'll, I will buy you a coffee. I wanted to, I wanted to speak today to address something that happened at the last board meeting. And I actually wanted to speak to Emma Zanin. Emma, you were so brave to speak up in a public setting last week. Unfortunately, it's not the first or last time that someone will use their position or power to try to talk down to you with the intent of quieting you. Every female identifying person in this room can remember the first time it happened to them. I'm so sorry it happened to you publicly by someone who should be a model and a mentor. You are strong. You are smart and you deserve to have your voice heard. Don't let anyone make you think otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Up next is Catherine Senna.
You got my Italian name right, Sean. Okay, so we can't start video. I would like to speak tonight in support of our student board representatives who spoke at the January twenty-sixth meeting about how the events of the past month have impacted students. As many of you know, I've been teaching in the district for many years. Over those years, I've seen a number of well-meaning curricular initiatives begin and end and embraced a number of flashy slogans. I've tried with all of my professional integrity, integrity to help all students achieve their dreams, to lead with love and to engage, educate and empower. Most importantly though, I have internalized the understanding that at the end of the day, the subjects we teach matter much less than the relationships we build and that the way that we communicate with our students makes the difference in whether they leave our schools empowered. At that last meeting, I witnessed a group of high school students do everything that we have taught them to do. These students are engaged. They volunteer their time to come to these meetings to speak to the student experience in the ICSD. They have been invited by all of you to help you understand how to support them in the larger student body that they represent. They are educated. They are articulate. They do their homework. They understand how to investigate and ask critical questions. And they demonstrate an ability to amplify one another when those questions go unanswered. They are empowered. In part, this is because of their place on the, that their place on the board gives them a platform. But they are also empowered enough to ask very tough, uncomfortable questions as they did two weeks ago. Questions that many of the adults in our community are too afraid to ask themselves. My concern is with the response that these students received at that meeting. I watched as our engaged, educated and empowered students' questions went unanswered. Not once, not twice, but three times. I watched as our students repeatedly requested answers to their questions and were completely ignored. Only once an adult insisted that the meeting not conclude without acknowledging the students' questions were their concerns even addressed. Once they were addressed, that response served one purpose, to disempower. Emma was told directly that her question had already been answered in a statement to the local newspaper. She was directly criticized for getting her information from social media. She was told that her question was not one that would be answered and she and her colleagues were publicly shamed for asking their questions in the first place. If I engage with students in my classroom, the way some members of the board engaged with their students in this classroom, I would expect to be reprimanded and I would deserve it. It is the responsibility of every adult in this district to engage, educate and empower every student, even when they are asking questions that we don't like, when they are seeking answers that we don't want to give, and even when we'd rather they be a little less empowered. I did not come here tonight seeking a response. However, I do believe that Adam, Grace, Alex and Emma owe you here a pardon.
Thank you, Catherine. Up next is Amy Bacon.
Good evening. I'm Amy Bacon. I am a parent, employee and taxpayer. I am here tonight reading on behalf of another ICSD stakeholder. Our community is paying attention to how ICSD Board of Education members have been conducting themselves recently. It's clear that many personal friendships have developed between board members and administrators. These friendships have made it hard for the community to feel confident that this board can fulfill its obligations in a responsible and impartial manner. Although allegations are unproven at this time, it is an all-too-common situation for a person in a position of power to abuse and manipulate that power. As elected officials, it's important for each of you to acknowledge that people are complex and can be capable of doing good work while also being capable of harm. In fact, these things often go hand in hand. Countless members of our community have their own deeply personal and traumatic experiences. And the board's response to this situation has huge implications for each and every person who has ever suffered on the losing end of power dynamics. Board members have a responsibility to consider your impact and how your responses may ripple in ways that you have not considered. As a district, we say we want our kids to deeply explore complicated nuanced issues, especially as they relate to marginalized disenfranchised people. If this is something we want our kids to learn, where is the role modeling from this board and this administration? Whether or not there is any truth to the allegations, this board and administration have clearly been engaging in behaviors that are problematic, like the refusal to respectfully engage with students who are asking hard questions. The very same students who you claim to empower and who you encourage to tackle difficult nuanced issues. During the recent United Way event, Dr. Brown himself said that love means having hard conversations and calling out blind spots. So we're calling out your blind spots, board members. This community needs to feel confident that you are capable of setting aside your friendships to do your job with the integrity and impartiality that our children and community deserve. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Amy. Up next is Kelly Evans.
Okay. I am also speaking on behalf of another ICSD stakeholder. We teach our children to take responsibility for their actions. We teach them that their actions have consequences. We should expect the same from our school leaders. Watching the events of Dr. Brown's resignation and then unresignation has demonstrated how deeply flawed our Board of Education and school administration has become. Instead of taking the opportunity to answer the taxpayers and students' questions openly and honestly, you have chosen to gaslight, intimidate and at times mock us. The Board of Education is acting as if Dr. Brown's choice to leave ICSD in the middle of a pandemic with two weeks' notice after serious allegations were made about him and other members of the Board of Education and high-level administrators' conduct and then change his mind is normal behavior. It is not. It has broken our trust in him and in you. You must answer to this. You must restore trust and faith if we are to move forward. You cannot repeat that this is a personal matter. It is not. We do not want details of anyone's family life. We want explanations and accountability for the statements regarding Dr. Brown, Lily Talcock, Kate Reed, Robert Ainsley and Sean Eversley Bradwell's misuse of power in their positions. We need explanations other than the resignation wasn't in writing to move forward. You cannot assume that changing Board of Education meeting public comment rules will silence this need for answers. This will not go away. The public. This will not go away, the public will not tire of this issue. We teach our children that when they make mistakes, they must own their part, accept the consequences, and ask for forgiveness. It's time to stop avoiding the elephant in the room. Until this is done, we cannot heal, we cannot move forward. It is your duty as our Board of Education, our leaders, to start doing the right thing. Please demonstrate to our children what strong leadership looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Up next is Melanie McMurray.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, sorry, I was having trouble getting myself unmuted. And thank you for the very large clock so I can keep track of my time. I actually, tonight, I'll start by introducing myself. I'm the parent of a fourth grader at Puget Heights and a sixth grader at Boynton Middle School. But tonight, I wanted to read a portion of a letter that was submitted to the board on January 30th, signed by 120 community members, parents, teachers, and staff in the district. I know this letter was received by the members of the board and publicized in an article today in the Ithaca Voice, but I still wanted to read a portion of it into the record here. I'll start reading the letter now. As ICSD community members, we would like to confirm that the Board of Education of the ICSD conducted an appropriate, independent, neutral, and diligent review of the workplace-related claims raised in the Urgent Appeal for New York State Education Department Intervention for Accountability, Justice, and Fairness in the Matter of Brown, Brown and the Board of Education, Ithaca City School District, dated January 5th, 2021, which we'll refer to as the Appeal. The board has stated that it has thoroughly reviewed the appeal and found many of the claims to be without merit and others to be outside the purview of school district business. There is a material difference between a review and an investigation. We respectfully request that the Board of Education provide more transparency about the methods and processes that they used in conducting their thorough review, and we request increased transparency regarding the Board of Education's decision-making process and the specific grounds on which each claim was deemed either meritless or outside the purview of ICSD business. We understand that personnel issues frequently are and should remain confidential. If the Board of Education cites confidentiality in declining to provide the specific grounds on which the claims were either deemed without merit or outside their purview, we request information about how the investigative process was conducted. We aim to ensure that the stated thorough review did in fact include an actual investigation conducted in accordance with best practices. The letter continues. But as you can see, I'm running out of time, and I think the essence of what we are requesting is captured by what I've read into the record. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melanie. And up next is Kelly Boyko. My apologies for mispronouncing the name.
No, you are fine. Yes, my name's Kelly Boyko. I am a mother of three students at ICSD, each receiving a different mode of instruction. It's a, I have, I have one at DeWitt, who's in eighth grade, and she's doing the hybrid model. One in sixth grade at DeWitt, who is fully remote, and one at Northeast, who's in person. So we've got all the perspectives. So first of all, I'm concerned about the educational impact and inequality of the learning methods the district is currently using. And I'm wondering how the district is preparing for what could be a majority of students who begin the 2021, 2022 school year below grade level. And I understand the district plans to continue offering a hybrid model. I think this is a good idea, especially since some students are thriving in the virtual setting. But I want to be clear that the current format is not working. Virtual students need a dedicated teacher for virtual instruction to be successful. Please continue to solicit direct feedback from the teachers about how to do this better. Finally, teachers are burning out. What is the district doing and planning to do to retain high-quality teachers and administrators who are in this situation who are burning out? And since I have more time, I'm going to reiterate, I'd like to know how you will be handling unequal learning experiences, and would like you to consult with and take the advice of teachers in regards to remote and hybrid learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. At this point in time, if there are other people who would wish to speak, please feel free to reach out to Emily Tracy or to Tricia Beresford. We do have additional time, we set a time of a half hour for public comment, so. Or please feel free to use the racing and feature. And in the interim, while I wait, folks can also use the Let's Talk feature. A number of community members have been writing letters to the board, please continue to do so, and feel free to reach out to us directly. So Emily or Tricia, any additional?
Sean, I don't see anyone using the raised hand feature, and I'm checking the chat right now.
No messages to me yet, Sean.
All right, Mr. Ainsley. Back to you, sir.
Very good, Sean, thanks, everyone. Student reps. Your opportunity.
Yeah, so as many of you know, last week was the end of the semester. During our discussion with the high school admin yesterday, we received clarification on the situation with the pushed deadline for grading, and if some of the changes being implemented, like the COVID safety nets. The grading committee is also resuming tomorrow, and we're looking forward to discussions on finding the balance between helping students in need while also holding students accountable. As some of you know, we also did a short survey asking for teacher and student responses. Grace is going to be talking a little more in detail about that a little later. But one thing that we found interesting in our survey to teachers was on whether teachers were receiving excused absences for recovery due to vaccine. Personally, I've heard around the community that the second dose especially may take time to recover from. So we were wondering if like teachers have their, have to use their own sick days on these recovery days, or if they, if these like absences are excused. I would love clarification on this topic, and just like the policies surrounding it. So we'll also discuss some of the other issues and responses that came up in both the teacher and survey, and teacher and student surveys as well.
At IHS, the English department brought the Black Lives Matter movement to their classrooms and informed about what the school has been doing to implement more diverse curriculums and giving students the floor to start questions about anti-racism using our class. Students clearly felt appreciative for the steps undertaken in our English department, but wondered what was happening outside of that. One question that came up quite often was, why do we have so few BIPOC teachers? There seems to be a push for ICSD as a district to do more in terms of hiring and rethinking attendance grading policies and incorporating relevant Black history intercurriculums. While we know there are some efforts being made in this direction, obviously, we've seen that today with our student speakers. People are still wondering how the district is measuring progress and what else is going on outside of classrooms on a district level to acknowledge this long overdue issue.
As mentioned above, we sent out a quick, open-ended survey to students asking what questions, concerns, and thoughts they would like to share with the IHS admins, the Board of Education, and their teachers. Keeping in mind to not frame the questions, we kept the questions as open-ended as possible for students to freely share whatever is on their mind. We received 54 responses in about 24 hours. Students were able to voice their concerns as well as their compliments. We would like to note that many students expressed gratitude and appreciation towards their teachers for all their effort they are putting in teaching this year. So as student representatives to the board, it is important to convey the thoughts and feelings of the students. One important topic that came up was the lack of a public response from the board to these recent allegations. We would like to read some direct testimonials and quotations from students that replied to the survey about this subject, so the Board of Education and the public can better understand how this situation is impacting students at Ithaca High School. I also noticed that there are quite a few IHS students here, so I am sure that they can all agree with some of these statements. So one student states, quote, "I'm concerned that the situation concerning Dr. Brown is not being treated with the seriousness that it requires. How am I, as a student, supposed to feel safe, secure, and supported in my school when the superintendent is abusing his power?" Another statement, quote, "Allegations are just allegations." This was said at the last board meeting when discussing Dr. Brown's return to the district and the questioning of why the allegations against him are not looking, are not being looked further into. This does not send a good message to children, families, and other adults. They say this should not concern the district. However, these serious allegations being ignored is a terrible role model for all in the district." Another statement, quote, "Do something about Dr. Brown. He has not addressed any of the allegations against him, and he is in no state to lead ICSD, especially the students he is supposed to be representing." Summarized, taken directly from the ICSD website, "Our district aims to promote a culture of love, specifically values of being trusting, committed, honest, and selfless. Many students are feeling a lack of all of these values between the superintendent, Board of Education, and the students, including the message the leaders of our education and school community are sending to us by not addressing and taking accountability of these serious allegations."
Since these allegations have emerged, the students and the public have received little to no direct communication from the district on this topic. This has led to widespread confusion and concern from many groups within our district, especially students, as seen in the quotes that Grace just read. While we, the student reps, have been fortunate enough to gain information directly from the board in private conversations on this topic, the rest of the community has not. From our understanding, the majority of the public's knowledge has come from local news articles and word of mouth. While we understand that legal statements from individual board members have been made public on this matter, they are not easily accessible by the public. As such, the community is still very much in the dark on the board's handling of the situation. I am sure that creating a common understanding of this situation is crucial to all of us in the community, and I think it would be beneficial for the community to hear directly and clearly from the Board of Education. So we would like to request a statement of some sort, whether a letter or email addressed to the, whether a letter or email addressed to the ICSD community about the board's positions and actions in regard to this situation.
Anything else? Board responses?
I'll start, I guess. There was an awkward silence and such great comments from everyone, and I know it takes a lot to say them all. Even for adults, it's hard to speak, there's a lot of people here. In fact, when I look at that number, it's hard for me to speak. I, I, thank you for sharing, I really. Alexandra, actually, your question really stuck out for me about the side effects from the vaccine and how we're handling that, I hadn't even thought about that. I know, I know it can hit people really hard. And I'm gonna leave my colleagues to talk about some other stuff, there's a lot to unpack here, but thank you for speaking out, as always.
I'm gonna speak. And I actually wanted to first speak to Kelly. Thank you for sharing with, about your experience and navigating the three different educational experiences during this pandemic time with your kids. I am going to refrain from responding specifically because I could not do justice, but I'm hoping that, you know, I plan on reaching out to our administrators and reaching back to you and following up on this so we can give you a response for planning for the future. This is not an excuse, but an understanding of we're trying to navigate a lot of this situation by situation and hopefully improve as we go. So please understand and work with us as we keep moving forward as far as your kids' experiences with their education. Emma, I actually, you know, the comments, and I do believe that you were very brave in reaching out to us and asking the questions you asked, and I'm gonna, I never try to speak for my fellow board members, but I'm going to speak that in no way, shape, or form was anyone trying to intentionally silence anyone or skirt answering your questions. As we navigate this difficult time and try to respect situations and also do things in a manner that is in the best interest of all parties, it's difficult. And I don't honestly have the words to speak to it. Respect privacy, respect legal matters, and also address all the questions that everybody wants us to answer in a public forum. I feel comfortable doing that and just being truthfully honest at this point. I, moving forward, we will communicate with the public in a manner that I hope addresses things, but it will be handled in a way that respects everyone.
I would like to also answer questions that I can openly answer at this point, and I'd like to just address a couple of remarks. First, first to Emma, when you asked about what is being done to hire teachers of color. I have served, I think, except for one year, on the Human Resources Committee of this school board since I was elected 10 years ago. And from day one, attracting and retaining a diverse set of teachers who can be role models for all students and advocates for all students has been a number-one priority of this administration and everyone I know on the board. And one of the steps that we took for many years actually was to have basically a dedicated individual within the Human Resources Office who was doing specific recruitment and retention of, of teachers of color. And with, with some success, not enough success, one of the, one of the advantages that our district has is that we're a relatively fluid district where people move in and out for various reasons, which means there are, there are usually openings. And having served on many hiring committees, I can say that in, in each and every opening, that has been a consideration. Are currently that very important position is being filled very, very competently and successfully by Gladeira Velazquez-Sims, who's, who had actually exceptional success in hiring a large group of diverse teachers, relatively large for our district. Unfortunately, the health situations and safety situations this year might have prevented a number of faculty, new faculty, from being visible, a number of students from not being able to see faculty, but that will continue to be an issue of priority going forward. And for Kelly Boyko, who talked about And for Kelly Boyko, who talked about not only unequal learning experiences and teacher burnout. Yes, there are unequal learning experiences. We are, along with every other school district in the country, are experiencing unprecedented times. I think I, my husband and I have talked with teachers who've said, "I don't know how much longer I can do this." We've talked with teachers who've said, "We can do it for this year." We're assuming that this is temporary. People are starting to get vaccinated, and that is a good thing. Vaccinations are not available for the vast majority of the people in our buildings, and that is people under 18. I mean, they haven't even developed those vaccines yet. And that is a concern for me as a parent and a grandparent if certain mutations occur. I haven't yet met anyone, any teacher in this district or any student in this district, really, who isn't doing the best that they can. Teachers are doing the best they can, those who show up in the buildings to support each other. Students who haven't burned out, who continue to be engaged, like the fourth graders we saw tonight, like all of the students who have spoken to the board and presented, it's a, I mean, to me, it's a model of resiliency and hope. As a lifelong educator who no longer directly educates, married to an educator who has taught in person, taught remotely, and yesterday started teaching a hybrid model at Ithaca College, which is probably the most challenging. I, I don't know that, I don't know that there's any way that we can make, wave a magic wand and make every single classroom and every single teacher and every single student come out with the same result. But we'll try. Thank you.
Hi, it's Moira Lang. So I'm not going to speak to some of the things that my fellow board members have spoken to quite eloquently. I do want to mention the fact that yesterday, was it yesterday, Dr. Eversley Bradwell and I met with the student reps and their advisor Barbara Bergman, and last week Nicole Fave met with the student reps and Barbara Bergman, and I felt like we, we had some good conversations, and as Adam referenced, you know, the student reps were made aware of some developments that the, the, the public at large is probably not aware of. So as was mentioned and quoted from, the Board of Education did receive a letter that was signed by 120 members of the community. The response to that letter was sent to the person whose email had, had forwarded the letter to us. And so an important issue that was mentioned in the letter is that since that letter was delivered to us last week, as a matter of fact, I believe it was on Saturday, that the Board of Education has now been served with a petition brought in the New York State Education Department, which is naming the Board of Education two individual board members, Dr. Brown and another administrator of the district as respondents. The petition raises allegations similar to those set forth in the letter that we received, signed by 120 members of the community. So the response of the Board of Education, we are, by law, we are responding to the petition, we have responded to the petition brought in the State Education Department. The proceedings before the commissioner are, are public, and the responses of the Board and Education and Dr. Brown will be available to members of the public. And in fact, the board's responses can be accessed by requesting them from the district clerk. So in terms of any of the allegations that are, that are addressed in our response to the petition to the State Board of Education, we will not be speaking about them until the commissioner makes a ruling, and that will be a public document.
I'll follow up with a couple of those things. I'm going to come back to what my colleague Moira Lang just said in a minute. I'm, I'm trying to take notes to make sure there's a thorough response and not go too long as well. To my board colleague, Aaron, 45 seconds of Zoom silence, actually, isn't that awkward? Anyone who's taken online classes know that there's upwards of a minute sometimes of students just sort of staring at each other, and I tell my students, you know, sometimes I let it go to two minutes just to make sure we have time of reflection, but I understand this virtual world that we're in has changed the game. The first comment I heard tonight was thanking the district for the anti-racist work that has been done and for the leadership to guide that anti-racist work. I want to thank Petula McBean and MJ Thomas for that statement. I think are the fourth graders that we heard from today in Mr. Anderson's class were a powerful testimony to that anti-racist work, and I'm very much looking forward to how we push that work forward, knowing that it's also going to bring around some conflict and some disagreements, and that's exactly why we engage in that work. I also heard comments about, you know, the reopening the school and the hybrid model, the mode of instruction. From where I sit, that work is extremely complicated, and what I mean by that is, as a college faculty member, I'm currently engaged in a high flex model of teaching in person and online at the same time. Not my preferred mode of teaching, extremely challenging to my own pedagogy and way of teaching, and also recognizing that a global health pandemic has made it where I don't have much option. And as we navigate these options as a school district, sometimes some of these decisions are outside of our control. We know that a number of our young people need to be in school for their caregivers and parents to access employment, and we know that there is extreme difficulty in doing a virtual instruction. And to the question about what are we going to do when there is a loss of a school year, I would say respectfully, that's not a question that we are facing as a district. That is a question we are facing as a state and as a nation, and anyone who reads educational research is talking about that as well, right? The COVID, the lost COVID year, we're going to struggle with that, and we look forward to community input to help us try to solve that, that issue. Policy 1400, which helps monitor or and/or probably the very wrong way of saying it, my apologies. The way in which to sort of help us engage with public comment, it's not changing the comment rules. In fact, that policy was passed in 2013. It's a rule that we'll look at again, a policy that we'll look at, because I think sometimes the language isn't the most appropriate. But I do want to make mention that every single elected body has stipulations about how the public engage during voting meetings, and that's from Common Council to Tompkins County Legislature, to the Town of Lansing. You name it, there is some sort of process through which to have that, and so I understand that, and that, yes, it does apply to the superintendent, even while a public figure, and as I have said to him on a number of occasions, a public servant, still an employee of the district. And so that may be something that folks may not want to hear, but that's the reality, that we do not discuss personnel matters of employees in public. Accountability and transparency, you heard from Moira Lang say that. At this point in time, we are responding to the petition. Again, folks should reach out to the board clerk if they want to see what those responses are. We will wait to hear from the commissioner's public decision that will be made available to all folks before we engage any further in the details of the specifics. But the documents are out there, and I appreciate our student rep, Adam, saying that they're not easily accessible. But I also want to remind folks that this is a very complicated issue and also includes young folks. And so we made them as easily accessible as possible, and that's by contacting the board clerk. And also, those documents also include the board's approach to the review. So the commissioner will make a decision, make a determination about how, if the board operated was appropriate or not. And so we will find that out along with our community. We have complete faith in what we have done. Let me, my apologies. I have complete faith in what I've, in what we have done, and I look for the board commissioner's review as well. I know there's been some conversations about personal friendships. Again, this is part of the petition, so I don't want to speak too much about it. I also do want to say that for more than 25 years, I've been as committed as I can be to this community, in particular to education. I'm a former ICSD teacher for eight years. I did my dissertation specifically on the Ithaca City School District and then ran for the board because my mentors in the community told me I should try to help make a difference. I remain committed to that very goal under any circumstance, that my primary focus is on the young people of this community. The student or the conversation about resignation of Dr. Brown, I know Dr. Brown will be talking about this shortly. There will be a public event coming up. I'll leave that for Dr. Brown to speak about momentarily. The silencing of our student reps, I think that's an important conversation for us to have. It's not the first time that this has arisen. I think that the, while we had a productive conversation with our student reps, also realize that there's a larger conversation to be had about how student voices are both heard and a part of the deliberations of the board. So I agree that we have work to do there, and I look forward to engaging that work. I will say, and I said to our student reps yesterday, I remain extremely impressed by not just their voice, but their assessment of situations. Having been a 20-year faculty member, I began by having to teach students how to engage in social justice work, and we have found pretty clearly that we have a number of fourth graders and high school students who know how to engage this work already. So thank you. Continue to push us. We'll have deep and difficult conversations. Two more, and then my apologies, we'll leave it alone. Yes, there is a significant focus on the increase of BIPOC faculty. I was one of the people who helped lead a committee 20 years ago, so we talk about time loops that we go in these cycles. The work of Gladeira is pretty amazing, and I know that we've had some outside training, particularly to focus on hiring committees of how to work on implicit bias, and we will continue to do so. Lastly, I greatly appreciate what I heard student reps say today, as well as yesterday, is about Black Lives Matter Week and pushing it outside of what many people expect to be simply English classes or social studies classes, that this same amount of work of anti-racism should be part of our science classes, part of our theater classes, part of all parts of our curriculum, and I look forward to helping and learning with the community about how best to make that happen. So we will continue to be available. We will continue to answer questions when and where we can, and I will put out to my board colleagues. It probably means that we should consider hosting something that Dr. Brown is considering hosting coming up soon, and we'll make the community aware of that as soon as we possibly can. So apologies for the long response, but I wanted to make sure I addressed what was asked of us.
Hello, everyone. This is Eldred. A lot of good things have been said. A lot of good comments from the students and the faculty and folks reading for themselves and on behalf of others. And I'm going to try not to repeat anything that has already been said and be more direct, especially to our four young people, Alex, Adam, Emma, and Grace. The, we on the board have different, let's say specialties. We have different trainings. We have different careers. And some of those careers allow us to address things more simply than others. I think everybody who's paid attention for the last 30 years of my input in this community knows my, my background is a legal background. So let me be as succinct, as succinct to the four of you as I can. The issues that were raised in the allegations and then the subsequent documents, the petition, and now the appeal to, to the State Education Department, they cross at some of the most intimate and personal and complex privacy issues that you can address, that anybody can address. First of all, we have items involving vulnerable young children. We have items and allegations about professional misconduct. And we have allegations that are of a deeply personal nature. Let me explain you as simply as I can without going into great detail. Any of you continue to law school, you'll find this out yourselves, because someone who's introduced these complex matters into the public sphere, they have, in effect, abrogated their privacy rights regarding the information by putting it out there publicly. I think we have a community, I think where you all might be misunderstanding our responsibility as board members, because one party has done that. The privacy rights to respond to these intimate things don't necessarily rely in us. They don't rely, they don't somehow magically become part of our bailiwick as board members because somebody else has thrown that piece of information to the public square. The privacy rights regarding the response and some very critical issues still vest in the other party involved. And you know who that party is. It's not our purview to necessarily throw that information back out into the public square in response. So we have taken our time. We have consulted with the folks who professionally are responsible for making sure the board does not run over any important trip wires in this regard. And although our board president may have tried to articulate it in the best way he can, like I said, we have different skills on this board. So we have deep privacy concerns on one hand. Please understand that even if we wanted to respond directly to some of these deeply personal professional matters, we just can't, or we can't in the timing and can't in the manner that you all expect us to. Has nothing to do with friendships, has nothing to do with some of the other things being mentioned, and I'm sorry if it came across as disrespect, but please hear what I'm saying. I actually can't imagine any more, any more information that somebody would be asking us to respond about that is as personal as what's been asked about, right? That is as private as what's been asked about, especially when it comes to the educational experience of minors. That's not your right to understand that. It's not your right to get that information. So that's my response regarding the privacy issue. The only other thing I want to address is, I think Sean said it, but this bear is repeating. District Circuit has worked incredibly hard, especially since, not especially since, but since I joined the board in 2009 and we hired Dr. Brown, our priorities have been to make the curriculum more culturally responsive and to diversify the people who we put in front of young people. Part of the problem that we realized in doing this heavy lifting, after we got professionals in to focus just on that, is that our educational partners, Ithaca College, Cortland, other educational facilities, that means colleges and, and universities that produce educational professionals, are running very thin. There's just not a lot of people to begin with, which is, which is our excuse. Which meant that we had to tighten up our game so that when we get in front of people, we can actually present a, a, a good case of why somebody should come here as opposed to another place. And this is the hard part that we all have to come to terms with. I've been told directly by some of these incredibly bright people that we have brought to the table, and they're not willing to be Ithaca saviors. They're not willing to save the race by coming to Ithaca, when they have the option to go to Brooklyn, when they have the option to go to Arlington, Virginia, and they have the option to go to other places, where the pressure is not on them as young professionals to fix Ithaca's racism. So I say that to everyone on this call. I say that to every student. I say that to every parent. I say that to every member of the community. Do some hard looking in the mirror. Do some hard looking about where you are regarding your own cultural responsiveness, regarding your own white privilege, regarding your regarding your own sensibilities that recently, recently been bought to the fore for all of us to see about the nature of white supremacy. You think that we're going to do this alone. There's nine people. We're two professionals, three professionals, and we include Dr. Brown and administrative office. I'm laying this at the feet of our entire community. We need to all step our game up. If we want to be able to compete with the other sites of diversity. When we're trying to acquire young talent. Thank you.
Thanks, E. Any other board members that have not spoken that wish to?
I think it's me, Rob. A lot has been said from the community as well as my fellow board members. I like to echo Dr. Bradwell in terms of sitting in awkward silence. I think sometimes we all need time to digest what we've heard. And it's okay to sit with that. I want to thank Batula and MJ for reading their letter comments about the work that we've done giving our anti-racist curriculum marginalization. In response to the parent that talked about the hybrid model, I can completely empathize with your feelings about how it's going and thinking about the future. And what that means when we talk about engagement, when we talk about success, when we look at our students' progress reports, report cards, like what, what does this mean right now and what will it mean next year? I'm hoping that our officer of evaluate, our chief officer of evaluations, Lynn, will be able to be present at our next meeting or in two meetings to talk about this data. We typically do an equity report card. I'm hoping this year we will also have an equity report card and be able to look at those numbers as well as compare that to student experiences regarding how our students are doing, how they're feeling and what changes we can, we can implement. In terms of what is ICSD doing to recruit black and brown teachers as Pat and Dr. Bradwell pointed out, we do have a HR committee and Glodera has been doing an amazing job. And to Eldred's point, I do think that it's important for us to take a step back and reflect on what are black and brown people's experiences, not in Ithaca, New York, but in upstate New York. My sister is a teacher. She teaches in Harlem. She works, she lives in Queens, but she teaches in Harlem and she would never move upstate, given the stories that I've shared with her, given the story she hears from friends that live in Syracuse or Rochester, given what some of our students' experiences are in our school district. I think those are heavy, complicated conversations that we have to have because a job is great, but belonging and feeling valued and worthy is more important. So it's not always about the money, but it's about the culture. And I also want to, I would like to talk to Eldred's point in terms of we all have different skills. When we think about the nine people on the board, we all bring something different. Some of us are better skilled at having complicated conversations or leaning into that discomfort while others are better at looking at financial documents, reading through policies. So asking for a bit of compassion and grace in that arena. As Moira pointed out, I did meet with the students last week and will publicly apologize for you all feeling as if we were invalidating you as if you were invisible. That doesn't feel good regardless of what our intentions were. The impact is still real. So my apologies for contributing to being complicit in that silence. Something that someone said this evening that has stuck with me tonight is to change your mind in a pandemic is, is not normal behavior. As I think about normal, the word normal, I question if any of us have felt any resemblance of normality living in COVID, living in a pandemic. We're not living in normal times. When I think about not just Dr. Brown, but when I think about Lily or Mary, Dan, Bob, our executive team, they have been working around the clock since the district has shut down, since we shut down in person in March. And, and I say that to speak to the level of commitment of our executive team. So when the question arose last week, I believe Emma brought it up, asking the board what, what we felt about that. And what I, I can only speak for myself. What I thought was not just Dr. Brown, but any human has the right to change their mind. In a time where we're all working over capacity, we are single parenting, co-parenting, doing so many things at once. Any leader, whether we're talking about a good leader, a leader in training will have those dark moments where they ask themselves, am I doing the best that I can? Should I step aside and let somebody else move in? Am I doing what's best for my kids? When I think about our amazing teachers and our support staff, a lot of what they're doing is putting our children, other people's children before their own. So I personally believe a human has the right to change their mind and to say, maybe this is not what I want because right now I find that we're all doggy paddling through life and trying to figure out what is right and what is right in a pandemic. So I guess me personally, I had compassion for how the community felt that it was bizarre, but I also had a lot of compassion for Dr. Brown and the fact that he's possibly trying to find himself. I'm 36 and I'm still trying to find myself and I don't know. And he's going to speak to that later. But my own personal reaction to that was, I was happy that he was staying. When we think about all the work that he has done in the past 10 years, when I think about the amazing students that read from their hearts, from what they believe to be true. That is the kind of work that was not happening 10 years ago. When I think about the fact that we have inclusive classrooms with children of diverse needs, there are plenty of classrooms across the state that still have special education classroom where students don't feel like they belong. When I think about how much support staff we have in our classrooms compared to other districts. And I know that we have teachers who need more help. I understand that, but I also know that our administration team has done their best with the budget that we have to support our teachers and to ask for what they need. So I'm happy that we have a leader who has decided to stay because there's still so much work to do. Forty percent of our black and brown kids are failing one or more courses at IHS compared to 8% of white students. Though that is what I want to spend my time talking about figuring out, giving students as well as our teachers and support staff what they need. I would not like to spend my time talking about parents differences in co-parenting. As a divorced parent, I know that divorce is hard. I know coming up with a custody agreement is hard. So I have no desire to to comment on that because it is, it is not my place. So I've said a lot and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Nicole. Does everyone have a chance to speak? Adam, you're raising your hand, I guess.
I would like to just clarify one thing. When, when myself and the other student reps, when, when we are asking for the board to to respond to the situation, what we are asking for is not for exposing any private or personal details or anything like that. We are asking for the board to clarify to the community what the board has done to reach the conclusion that that the, that these allegations could be dismissed. As in the process by which the matter was investigated by the board. And on who the people, who were the people doing the investigating? We're not asking for any personal or private details that would infringe on people's privacy. We're just asking for a little transparency into the process.
Adam, let me try to respond. I can appreciate that question. I oftentimes want to remind people that Ithaca is made up of multiple communities. So folks in the community that I spend my time with are not asking that question. They're asking about how can we get more than 40% of our black and brown kids who are failing one class to do something different? The response that we are giving to the question that you're asking about the process by which the board came to the conclusion are included in the documents that folks can receive. We will speak and you can, folks can make their own determinations upon receiving those documents about what they believe the process was. And the petition to the commissioner asked explicitly to make a judgment about the process that the board used. So we will know from the commissioner whether we followed a process that was just, that was fair, and that was in the best interest of the young people of Ithaca City School District. And until we receive that decision, it's in the board's best interest not to speak much further on it. I realize that is a complicated response for the community, for other communities within our community who may want more information. But that's the unfortunate reality in which we find ourselves at this point in time. Thanks, Adam. Thanks, Sean. Once again, I will only follow up. We welcome the opportunity for the state Education Department and the Commissioner's Office to look into everything that we have done regarding the allegations. You know, I certainly for Emma and others at the last, last meeting, I think certainly for, for my part, you know, it's, it's as others have said, some speak better than others in public, but for me, I think you really just saw the sheer frustration of of not being able to answer questions directly. I am not complicated. We are not complicated. We followed by the book and we know what we did, but we could not share that. And and unable to verbalize, unable to explain. We are not allowed to. We are not allowed to discuss in public anything, any items that we discuss in exact session, certainly items related to young children in the district and certainly items related to employees. I certainly echo comments of other board members, but what what this latest petition to the State Department of Education is an opportunity for others to see what we saw and see the evidence that we saw and as we went through our process. So I am more than more than, I'm not going to say pleased, but I am going to say that it's a welcome process to go through. We as a board did everything that we could to ensure that we, we addressed all the allegations and, and we look forward to the community. Those who wish to can certainly look through it, but going through the board clerk to get the documentation. It is extensive. And, and I think, you know, we, we will have an opportunity to hear from Dr. Brown regarding what Dr. Brown is feeling and thinking regarding the direction of the district and moving forward, which is always a opportunity to, to come together and, and work together. So we'll look forward to that. And we have a few, few items to get to. And I think we'll, then we'll get to the school district business, but we're going to go on to consent agenda. And I think unless any other board members has anything else that they wish to share right now. But we I will only finish with my comments and saying that we, we always look forward to the interaction with our student representatives from Ithaca High and in the past with LACS as well. It is valued and we encourage that engagement and and we look forward to further engagement with our student reps from both schools. And eventually getting back to a normal board meeting where there can be more interaction and have it more organic. And so we look forward to that. So let's go on to the consent agenda and we have some items that we need to approve. And then we're going to get an update on capital projects and some other items. So consent agenda, please.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Thank you, Moira. Can we get a second? Second by Chris. And there's a few items there. And any special Chris or others that we need to address?
I don't see anything special or noteworthy.
Very good, Chris. So Tisha, if you please, if there are no other questions regarding the consent, we'll go ahead and call it off.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicola Faze?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Pat Wozlin?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks, everyone. And Dr. Brown?
More than ever, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Ainsley, to share. It's been alluded to quite a few times already tonight. I just wanted one item, just to update folks and announce to the community. We've sent an email out. It's on our social feeds as well. We are going to be having, hosting a series of community conversations on February 21st and 28th. Those are Sunday evenings, both beginning at seven o'clock. The first one on the 21st will focus in on mental health and wellbeing. We were bringing in some of our community leaders when it comes to mental health and wellbeing, who will be a part of a panel discussion. Myself, Ms. Talke, Ms. Burke, Carrie Burke will be on that panel as well, sharing where we are as an organization, what we can do to support that in our young people and adults. The 28th will be focused on public health and infection control. So we'll be talking about where we are currently with the in the midst of this pandemic, what we're doing in our schools, what we can do differently, what we can do better. Also, on the 21st, we will be having a community conversation with just me. And this is a board meeting. The board has much work to do and you need to get to a board, that board conversation. But on the 21st, at eight o'clock, we will engage in a community dialogue. Thank you, Merrill Phillips, who's the executive director at the Village at Ithaca for volunteering to be the facilitator of that Q and A dialogue. But yeah, there's a lot on my heart. I'm looking forward to sharing about where our schools are currently and where I see them going in the future. Everything from the different modalities to our plan for the summer, to our plan for the fall, to budget. There's much work for us to do. Much work for us to do. But I, you know, and I'm also looking forward to answering other questions and also sharing some things again on my heart and my mind. And you know, the word, you know, this notion of a culture of love has been referenced a lot tonight. And folks have gone so far as even speak to their individual principles. And I've always said, a culture of love is not a love fest. It's messy. It's uncomfortable. It is not the default. If I could, I, I'm talking right to my students, our students right now. There are two principles I wish to talk about with you. Two, and the two are forgiveness and commitment. Yes, I humbly am coming to you and our community asking for forgiveness because there are two, for two reasons. For two reasons. One, yeah, I changed my mind. You know, the folks who know me, the folks who actually reach out and call and talk to me or pick up the phone and ask a question, they've known, I've been talking about this for 10 years. For 10 years, I said, at the 10-year mark, I was going to be in a very reflective mode about what to do, DO next. And I, you know, and I kept that commitment to myself that to be reflective of what I would do at the end of 10 years, serving this amazing community that I love and committed to. And I will say, you know, the death of my mother actually accelerated that commitment, that reflection and commitment to thinking about what to do next. And when doing that, yes, I was, and I was always committed to the young people here. Always for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the last decade, even on snow days, most, most importantly on snow days. I've been committed to the young people in this community. And when thinking about what to do next, I thought, yes, we could serve the young people in this community. I would still live here and we could do similar things like you heard at the beginning of this meeting at an international level. Because you know, through my travels over the last decade, I'm realizing that what we do here, the conversations we're having about anti-racism is not happening everywhere. How do we scale that to every place? And yes, I was presented with an opportunity to do that everywhere. But as I was reminded by somebody, somebody on this call, and I got a lot of feedback after making that announcement. I was struggling, but I knew I thought I could serve not only the young people here, but all over the world by doing by doing something different, doing something different. But I was reminded by somebody on this call, that's not who you be. And again, reflecting on the lessons I've learned for a long, long time from my elders, it's much more important to think about who you be, B E, than what you do. So yes, I'm asking for forgiveness for changing my mind, but I'm also trying to model for you a lesson because you're all going to be faced with a similar situation about whatever I do or am I going to be committed to who I be? And who I be is a community servant. I've been raised to serve a community and I've committed to serve this community. And yes, I know what comes with serving communities, particularly in public roles like the one I serve in. You have to give up a whole lot of privileges, including the right to your privacy. And I was also told by my mama, you know, when you serve communities, when you serve in this way in an authentic way, and when you're about justice work, which I have committed my life to being about, because she inspired me to take her place when she was gone, when you're about justice work, when you're doing justice work, folks will, yeah, you will, you will experience some successes and some achievements, but you also must be prepared for the resistance, which can come in many forms. And we've had those conversations about the work we've done around justice work, and it's come in many forms, including rumors, gossips, gossip and character assassination. And if you think about all the folks who've been a part of justice work, and there's some historians on this slide, think of one who has been about, been about justice work, who hasn't had that happen to them too. So yes, I'm prepared for the resistance, but never question my commitment. That's another lesson for folks. If you ever wonder about someone's commitment, just ask them about it. Because I can tell you how much commitment I have to the young people in this community and to my community that I serve and I live. And yet I'm fired up now to serve, hopefully, God willing, for another decade. Because now I realize that to be a community servant means you serve like I'm serving right now. And it comes with all the privileges you must give up, all the controversies and the achievements like today, when I had, when we had those young people speaking about anti-racism and speaking about how they, how certain cultures want showing up in our text. That's a small win that comes along with all the resistance. So, you know, on that, at that session on the 21st, I'm looking forward to talking a lot about all of this. Most importantly, talking about the future of our schools and love, because there are many other characteristics I want to talk about too, and how it's playing out in our community. So I'm asking for your forgiveness for one change in my mind, because I know that can be disruptive, but I'm also asking for your forgiveness because I underestimated how I would have to give up that right to making personal and professional decisions that were mine without giving major explanation for it. So yes, I hope this is some explanation for why I changed my mind. It was not about some new contract from the board. It was not about some offer being rescinded. No, it was about my commitment and wanting to do this work in the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of all the social unrest, because I'm committed to justice. And on the 21st, we're going to go deeper into all of that. And if folks have questions about anything else, just call me and you will get an answer. Thank you, Ms. Ainsley, for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to more dialogue.
Thanks, Dr. Brown. We look forward to the 21st. And we do, moving on, we do have an opportunity to catch up on capital projects. We do need to do a temperature check on where we were in phase one, phase one B and phase two, but lots have been done and there's much more to do, but opportunity tonight just to get an update on where we finished up from the fall and then moving forward. What building near you will there be a construction project as we head into the spring and the summer of 2021? So Amanda, Chris, others, please.
Hi, everyone. This is Amanda Verba. I'm the chief operations officer for the district and I've invited my very, very smart colleague, Chris Gloubitz, from Tetra Tech Architecture Firm, who has been serving as the leader architect for this project and been working with the district through the visioning and then the design development and then the construction development and, and then moving forward into the project itself. Chris will be doing most of the presentation this evening. I'll be here to answer any district specific questions. We think this is really smart because it is budget season and you'll be seeing a lot of me. And so it's really nice to be able to share the air with someone who is doing this every day and, you know, and to pass it over to somebody who really has the expertise around how, how we're doing in terms of the first part of phase one. I'm sure you've seen a lot of activity on a number of our campuses. And then phase one, the second part of it that's coming up this summer. So Chris shared his screen and I'm going to let him sort of walk us through where we are today.
Thanks, Amanda. Just want to start with saying Tetra Tech is still very excited for the opportunity to help our communities, schools and help support the great work that we saw examples of tonight by, by helping the facilities be able to support all that. So with that, go through fairly quickly. We have a lot of work going on through the pandemic. One of the things that we've been able to do is, is keep pushing through some capital project work. So hopefully when we all are back in person in schools, the facilities are ready for that. So this is an image that you've seen before. On the left, we had sort of planning, design and approval on construction. As projects progress, they move sort of from the left to the right. So this just is a summary of all the projects we've got going on right now. I'm going to start at the right, phase one, which was the first, the first large chunk of capital project work. Some of that is done. Some of that is yet to do this coming summer as it was scheduled. And I'll get it a little bit more in detail in that in a minute. We have actually next week over, over the break, we're going to be getting a smaller project done in Boynton where we're going to replace those gymnasium bleachers like we did at DeWitt last year. That's coming up in construction. Right behind that, we've got a big project at the Ithaca High School roof replacement. Keeping, keeping those facilities and that infrastructure updated. So that's going to happen this coming summer and the summer of 2022. I'll show you some, some brief phasing on that in a moment. We have what we're calling phase two, which is the next large chunk of capital project work. We're in the sort of final stages of the design phase of that. We'll be getting that into the state for the review to tee that up for construction starting in the summer of 2022. So that one's still, you know, a good year and a half out before we're going to start seeing things happening there. As well, we have some HVAC work at Boynton and DeWitt Middle Schools. There's been a lot of discussion about, you know, the temperature fluctuations and, you know, things, improvements that can be made there so that, so that the heating can be more efficient and, and provide a better temperature control in those buildings. We're also finishing that up and that'll go to the state soon. And we hope to start construction on some of those improvements, probably late in the summer into the fall. That's work that can happen as on second shift as, as school is occurring. Back in the planning phases, we also have a facilities evaluation where a few months ago, we, we went through and did a more broad assessment of the facilities. And that's, that's to help inform the future phases like phase three, which is we're, you know, just starting to think about. It's kind of very high level overview of the capital projects to dive into phase one, which is the, the first chunk of work. So obviously we've gotten a few things done. The Carolina septic system is in, transportation, all that paving that's done. If you've been out there, you'll see the buses are now on the pavement as opposed to the gravel. South Hill Roof got done this past summer. When you start to see some things in red highlight, that's, those are things that have been scheduled to, to be happening this coming summer. So a little bit of flooring work in Boynton in the middle school there. Elementary schools, we got a number of them done this past summer and fall. You know, the COVID year has affected manufacturing and supply chains. So if you're in these buildings, you will, you will know that some of the parts and pieces were delayed, but for the most part, Bell Sherman and Annex, EJAM, Enfield, those improvements to the security entrances are pretty much in place this coming summer. We've scheduled similar kinds of improvements at Keuga Heights, Fall Creek and Northeast. So those will be, those will be starting up as school gets out. Moving to the, the athletic realm, we've got a lot of work done over at the stadium, at Maresco Stadium. There's a little bit to finish up. As far as paving, we ran out of, you know, warm enough weather to get all the paving done. So when, when the thaw hits us sometime, maybe soon, we'll finish up some work there and do the piece of work on the varsity baseball field to improve the drainage out there. Because if you played out there in March, you know, it's a mess. So improvements there as well as kind of normalizing that, that outfield fence line as well. Getting into Ithaca High School, so areas B and J, if you've been over there, you know, those are pretty much put together and ready to go. We're waiting on a few furniture pieces to arrive still. As well, the crossover between G and F and the closure of courtyard over at the CJ crossover. Those are mostly done. We're, we're getting a few doorwork struggling bits to happen. The pool is ongoing. I'm showing you being done, but it's, there's still some work to be done in there. And area K, there's significant renovation in York Hall that we've talked about. That's scheduled to start this coming summer there to transform that space. So just a, one more quick slide on the high school roof. The summer of 2021, this coming summer, there are a number of areas A and B as well as J, G, H and K that will be re-roofed. There'll be a lot of work going on on the campus there. And then summer of 2022, finishing up the rest of the, of the building that has that same vintage of roofing. So that's, that's overview. Any questions or comments on that?
Chris, just, just clarification regarding the stadium. Apparently we are approved for sports to start and there will be some outdoor sports this, this spring. Stadium, the turf itself ready to go and certainly usable for practices, gym classes, games, et cetera.
Correct. The synthetic turf is in and complete. The coating on the track needs to be done in the spring. Once we have appropriate atmospheric conditions, temperature outside to, to apply that material. So the track right now, you'll see it's just asphalt and that will remain until, until we get the, the right weather conditions. There is also a little bit of asphalt paving to do to finish up in some of the walkways.
Chris, sorry, Rob. Two questions. Does that mean that the track will not be available at all this academic year?
That is correct.
And you may have mentioned this and I apologize if you did. I know we talked about it in facilities committee, but any update on the pool and where we're headed?
Sure. I should revise my answer I just gave you. If the academic year ends in June, we, we may have that, that coating down maybe in May. Yeah, as far as the pool goes, we have been doing some more investigation with regard to a a failure of some of the material to remain bonded to the wall and had a consultant out to look at it. We are in the process of receiving some testing that's still pending. Pool tests, some, some analysis on the materials to try to figure out why the deep end wall, there was, there were some issues there to be sure that we address it when we, when we reapply that material to get that done. I understand the contractors are working on the pool deck area and working on getting on that tile starting to be put in place while we're waiting for confirming some of the things within the pool shell itself.
Anything, anything else right now from anyone? Can we fill just a second? Amanda, we, we will be getting an update on where we are as far as the financing goes with where we are with what we've done and what's on the books and where, you know, in the planning stages and then what, you know, and all that process frankly will be updated soon, I believe. Correct, Amanda?
That's right. And Rob, for the public, remember that there is a very robust area of our website for the capital project that every month our construction management firm, which is Campus Construction, puts together quite a large resource document for us that, Rob, to your point, tracks the funding of the project and shows the budget to date based off of the expenditure to date based off of the budget that we thought, right? And so also two elements of the budget for the project, such as like the bids that come in, that's all public as well. And so we can share that and any results as they roll in. We try to post that information onto the website so that, again, the public can track with, you know, full transparency, what we're using, that the funding that we receive through debt service for. And just to remind folks, remember, we didn't, we don't borrow all of the money, right? This money that was approved through the voters' approval. We were approved to spend up to $120 million over a course of time. We borrow in, in segments or in portions of it as needed to cover the costs for a particular moment of that, of that project. So that's also very public and those will all be board actions and on consideration of accounts whenever we do that. So Rob, yes, we will be doing that. I don't know if it's this month in finance. We're pretty full on the agenda for finance this month. We actually have the BOSI's programs that will be presenting their budget as well as, I want to say it's either technology or special education, and I apologize for, I should have sorted that out prior to unmuting. But one of those two programs will be presenting in February and then we'll have some time in March to go through the, the numbers for the capital project specifically.
Well, thanks, Amanda. It's an ongoing process and we did just want to give folks an update that indeed staging areas at Ithaca High have come down. But there will be staging areas going back up again and not only at Ithaca High, but across the district. So this will be an ongoing process over the number of years. But the, we look forward to the, the final, final at Ithaca High, at least the, the Welcome Center, et cetera, when, or in other spots that have been newly renovated to get a walkthrough and certainly welcome the public to take a little walk around Ithaca High sometimes too, when you're out with a dog or just out trying to get away from a computer for a little bit, take a walk around Ithaca High. It's, you know, it's coming, getting closer to being pretty fully renovated. So we look forward to that. And, and your local elementary school as well. There's work going on at every elementary school through this process and certainly the middle schools as well. So thanks, Chris. We will, well, I think we'll see you Thursday, correct?
That's right.
So look forward to that. Amanda, the same thing. And and on to a one policy tonight, and then we can pretty much wrap up this meeting today.
Thanks, Rob. I'll speak to policy 8240, which is our policy that sort of helps to talk about our parking and traffic on campuses. I will also say in this public meeting that most likely on our next policy agenda will include policy 1400, which includes public participation at board meetings. We'll be reviewing that. I want to make sure that that's on the record for this evening. This policy 8240 is an important policy for us to realize the, some of the great concerns that many have had, not just myself who's a policy book, but anyone about the school district and some of the policies that we are, that we have. The last time this policy was adopted was 1976. So it gives us some indication that it is outdated. And as we're working our way through from the zero, the hundreds series to the 9,000 series, we find ourselves currently in the 8,000 series before we've reviewed all policies at the school district and will continue to revise policies as we need to, to meet the needs and the times of our school district. The district traffic and parking policy, we had
The district traffic and parking policy, we had been talking about for some time. I want to thank Amanda Verba in particular for leading the work around this policy. I know there was significant outreach to school building leaders as well as the central administration team. And Amanda, without stealing too much of your thunder, the goal was to try to write a policy that was reflective of a practice of love. The previous policy was very punitive in the way in which it was discussed. So how about I stop for a second, Amanda, if you're willing to talk about some of the guiding principles and then what we came up with, and then we'll go from there. Does that work?
Absolutely. So, you know, there's a I think one of the things that we shared at Policy Committee, right, is that oftentimes, policy, whether whether it's good or not, reflects itself in tradition. And some traditions, we do want to carry forward, and some traditions, we really need to analyze to say, have we outgrown them? And is the spirit of who we are as a district not represented in what this tradition of this policy originally was? And this is a tradition that we're willing to let go. There were the policy from 1976 definitely had a lot of regulatory language. Now, this is all based in law, so we don't want to lose the fact that there are laws that we must follow. And then we want to keep people safe. We want to keep our pedestrian traffic safe. We want to keep our vehicular traffic safe. We want to be able to have traffic flow in and out of our buildings, all of our buildings, instructional and non-instructional. But we also don't want to create so many rules and regulations that it feels as if this policy is rooted in punitive measures, if not followed, when it comes to even just a parking space, right? So we understand there will be punitive measures if you pass a school bus with a red light. That will have to stay in the policy. We will have to call someone, or we'll have to report you for that. That is law, and that is due to safety. But a punitive measure about such something like getting a parking sticker on your car in a bright neon color that says, this is not yours. You are not to use this is not something that we wanted to continue. And so if you notice, the language of this is trying to balance that idea of having the sense of of following what is safe, right, and what is what is by law, but also trying to make and remind people that these spaces are community centers. And we can define that community as broadly as we want, because truly, depending on the day and the time and the moment, that is the community center of many, many areas of our region. And so we want to feel welcoming. We want to feel inclusive. We want to have people feel like our campuses are welcoming them to them. And so we tried to sort of, again, walk that that line by outlining safety measures, but also making sure that people knew that they they were welcome to join us. And we worked a lot on some new language around traffic flow and drop offs and pickups. We're gonna rely on some environmental changes after the policy is done. So you'll notice that the policy will have items that might say, you know, follow the signs, or we're gonna have visitor spaces. That means that we also then have to change the environment, right? We might be eliminating spots with numbers and increasing the number of spots with visitor signs, right, or with no signage whatsoever that prohibits someone else from from parking there. So I hope that 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 sort of gave an overview of the spirit of the policy.
Amanda, thank you. That's great. A couple of things I just want to highlight before we open for conversation. Again, this is a first reading. The process for board policy change is to have two readings. A first reading, it goes back to policy committee. Policy committee takes a look at it, comes back to the board for a second reading and adoption. One, it's a reminder to the community that are still on the call that our committee meetings are where the majority of the conversations happen, where the the work takes place. And so we invite community members to join all of our committee meetings, particularly to have your voice heard. It's easier to participate and engage back and forth during our committee meetings, and we simply do the business of voting or voting yea or nay at the board buildings. In particular, in this policy, we had a number of community members write in and talk to us about language that we ended up using in the actual version that people see here. It's also important to note that this policy, for example, in 1976, was completely rooted in forms not just of being restrictive language, but forms of sexism. It presumed the superintendent was male, so it kept saying his, 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 his. That was the pronoun that was used throughout the policy. So part of our reason for reviewing policies is to remove language that may be, as again, our fourth graders identified, offensive, prohibitive, marginalizing, etc. And as you so eloquently said, Amanda, it has an impact, not just on how we practice, but on the actual facilities. So if we write a policy that is inclusive, it may mean that we have to change the the sign, the painting on our parking lots, right? The signage that is before. How do we invite community members? How do we create visitor spaces? So I think all that is extremely important for folks to know, including writing a policy that is flexible, but at the still, at the same point in time, provides some direction. So with that being said, the policies before, folks, it's a first reading. I don't know if there's any questions from board members, or before I do that, Pat or Moira or Anne, who is a a policy member without being on the policy committee, any other additions that you would ask before or add before we kick it off to our board members?
Nothing to add for me, Sean. It's a it's a pretty, a pretty big overhaul from what we've had for a long time, and we spend a lot of time talking about what it's like to write a comprehensive policy for 14 different properties and to do it in in the fairest and most sensible way. So at at this point, I think we're we're really looking for comment input and additional pairs of eyes.
If I can ask a question? So in the context of BJM and thinking about the parking lot that they have that I'm not 100% sure, but I think that they share with GAC. When thinking about the designations for visitors, one, what is that? What does that look like? Secondly, thinking about the the fire hydrant that is in front of the building, I know from personal experience and other parents that because of the signage there from eight to 10, you're allowed to leave your car to take your child in. But it also asks that there's one adult in the car. Obviously, all of us are not living in a two-parent household or two adults, and even those who are in a two-adult household, one parent usually goes to work while the other parent drops the kid off. So I know that's probably has a lot to do with city regulations, but I'm wondering if it, if we should at least engage in a conversation around like the fact that the policy is pretty classist in terms of I've gotten $75 tickets from picking up my son and not being able to find a parking spot because there it's mostly two-hour parking because it's downtown and and it impacts our families. We know about the demographics and receiving a $75 ticket is a lot of money for some people. So I'm just wondering how we're thinking about BJM specifically.
Nicole, Amanda, respond to this because we've been having this conversation. It's not just BJM. Fall Creek is also within the city. South Hill has some pretty significant parking issues as well. Not to say other school buildings do not, right, but so, yes, parking around BJM is primarily dictated by the city. The parking lot is Ithaca City School District property. So we own that parking lot as well as the walkway that goes through there. So there was a lot of conversation about what takes place in front of BJM. Are there ways in which we can partner with the city to create some expanded notions of temporary parking to make sure that there are spaces for folks to be able to walk their children in and out of school? Our daughter went to BJM, so I know exactly what you're talking about, right? Dropping off and picking up. It's a problem. And so, Amanda, we had some of these conversations, and I know that you've looked into it as well.
That's right, Nicole. You brought up a really great part that I left out, right? So when I I should have mentioned not just the environmental shifts, but also the community partnerships around a lot of our buildings. BJM specifically, I know that Dr. Esch, we have talked so many times specifically about safety with bus drop off and a bus arms, the stop sign being out, lights on, and traffic still flowing past it as if that was absolutely not happening. And so there are safety issues there, not just parking issues. It's a it's both are true at the same time, right? The the parking lot itself, that is one where I know that oftentimes community members might use that, and we try to capture some language around how we can still be supportive of community members, but mindful of that we have an operation with children and families and community members of our own that we need to really be sort of thinking about drop off pickup and like sort of the that bookend of those days, right? How important that is? So we tried to capture that language. We also tried to capture some language around if, for example, a car is left there or a vehicle is left there or a camper is left there for however long. How do we not take spots away from our staff, our families, to be able to have that there? We will need to continue to reach out to the city and to a couple of the towns and villages, depending on where our schools are located. Because this is this is something I think I'll consider that the environment plus, right? Because, I mean, I've I've had I've had contractors walk to the, you know, park their car with their lights on to check on a safety issue with a security door and get ticketed. Right? And so we hear it all the time from folks that are doing like the work in schools, family members that are that are, you know, a student forgot their lunch and they run in because they just wanted that extra hug, and then they come back out and they get a ticket on their car. And we unfortunately, we don't have any purview with that, but we can strengthen relationships, right? We can create opportunities to for dialogue to try to change that system as well. So I think that this will be sort of that motive, not just motivation, but the impetus, right? So that's like, we've done the work here. How can you help us? What can you do to partner with us? And we can definitely work with the community to to make that happen as much as we can, right?
Additional questions from our board colleagues about the policy? We will continue to engage these questions. We'll continue to reach out to the city to try to find some solutions and some partnerships and encourage folks to join us for our next board policy meeting where we try to finalize policy 8240 and bring it back to you for a second reading and adoption. So if no more other questions from our board colleagues, Rob, I believe we may be able to call the vote for a first reading. You did, you did move it, Sean, correct? I did not. I moved policy 8240 for a first reading at this time.
Second?
Second by Pat. Glad I could help out a little bit at the end. But I really appreciate the policy committee wrapping up the evening with a policy on traffic. So there's but it it is one of many items that we are responsible for. So we look forward to a vote. Tricia, if you please?
Sure. Rob Ainsley? Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Aaron Crowell? Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris? Nicole LaFave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Pat Wazle?
Yes.
Thanks, Pat, for wrapping that up, and thanks, everyone. Dr. Brown, anything else for you tonight before we let folks go home?
I think we all said. Thank you.
Very good, Dr. Brown. Well, upcoming dates of importance. Well, I think certainly the 21st, and we have our various work sessions. As Sean says, we invite the community to come to our work sessions, tune in for a bit or all. Every Tuesday, there's a work session on something. Certainly, as we get into the budget finance, that is where the work is done, basically, for all our, everything that we vote on, everything we discuss in a public session is discussed in a work session at some point. So feel free to tune in while we work through the rest of the COVID winter into springtime. But let's let's wrap it up tonight, and we'll see everybody soon. And thanks, everyone.